If everybody would start and stand. And Commissioner Lanier, will you lead us in a prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us today, together today, to conduct the business for the county, make sure that we are making the best decisions for the citizens of San Juan County, and we just ask for your protection over our first responders, and please, Lord, bless us with some more rain so that we can help our farmers and just have water for our community, and we ask this all in Jesus' name, amen.
Commissioner Totacini, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, if you'll have a seat. Now, I'll go ahead and go into the regular meeting, are there any additions or deletions from the agenda?
Madam Chair, there are not, agenda is as presented.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So move. Second?
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Okay, I'll go into the consent agenda, and there's five of those. Number one, consideration of FY 26 budget adjustment, number one, resolution number 252620, oh, there's only two of them, sorry, I went too far down. Consideration of renewal of proposal 24253, fire hose and fire hydrant testing to fire company LLC of Farmington, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the two consent agenda items.
Okay, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. So now, I have consideration, proclamation, first declaring September 17th through the 23rd to as Constitution Week, and I don't know if anybody's here from Desert Gold, so, what's that?
Yeah.
Yeah, are you here? Okay, so do you mind coming up to the podium and introduce yourself and just tell us a little bit about Desert Gold, and then I'm going to read their proclamation? I can see you there, sorry.
I'm Rebecca Atencio Hunter, and I'm here on behalf of the Desert Gold Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and on September the 17th at 1:30 at Orchard Park in Farmington, there will be activities to celebrate our Constitution as well as the ringing of the bells, there's a great big bell, and you can go and you can ring the bell in honor of one of your veterans or a patriot like in the American Revolution. I have a patriot who was a soldier at the Spanish Procedio in Santa Fe during the American Revolution, and that's how I'm adopted in American Revolution, but everyone come, come enjoy the celebrations for our Constitution, we, it will be 250 years next year that we have been a nation, and there's so much to celebrate as Americans.
Thank you, Rebecca, and thank you for being here today, and we'll have a frank copy for that day too for you, okay? So I was going to go ahead and read this, and it's San Juan County, New Mexico proclaiming September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week 2025, whereas September 17th, 2025 marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion and, whereas public law 915 guarantees issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week, and whereas the Desert Gold Chapter of the National Daughters Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution will be celebrating U.S. Constitution Week on September 17th, 2025, now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of the San Juan County, New Mexico does hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2025 to be Constitution Week in San Juan County, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves, and I'll be signing that, Rebecca, we'll get you a copy. We'll get a signed copy for, probably not today, but we'll, we'll get you one, okay? I'll get it to you, thank you. All right, so now we'll go ahead and go on to number two.
Do you need a motion?
Oh, yeah, it's an action, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept the proclamation declaring September 17th through the 23rd to be Constitution Week 2025.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. All right, now we'll go on to number two, consideration of proclamation celebrating extension and expansion of the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act, RECA, and this will be by Commissioner Totacini.
One evening, I was watching Channel 5, and it was on the, I think it was called Atomic People, and it was talking about the survivors of Hiroshima, and these Japanese, they were just kids when the bomb was dropped, and at the same time, the exposure to radiation of the uranium workers who worked in the mines like over in Cove, in the Gallup area, so, plus bombs were being exploded in Nevada and white sands, and at the time, there was not a lot of protective wear that workers and people who observed these detonations, but there was all that that was floating in the air, and I know the miners, when they were underground, I guess they drank the water, and the water was contaminated, and it was after years later that people were getting very, very ill. I think over in the Cove area, there was even a home that was built with the hot rocks, and there, there were some children, they had birth defects, so, at this time, the individuals who really fought to get compensation, I, I wrote up the proclamation, no, I'm just kidding, I thank you, Mr. Sawyer, for writing that up for me, and I, it makes it kind of emotional, so I'm going to put my manager to work, and he's going to read the proclamation for me.
I'd be happy to do so, Mr. Totacini, so this proclamation, celebrating extension and expansion of the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act, and supporting individuals and families affected by radiation exposure, whereas the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act, RECA, was first passed in 1990 to allow partial restitution to individuals who develop serious illness after exposure to radiation released from atmospheric nuclear tests or during employment in the uranium industry, and establish an administrative program for claims relating to said exposure, and, whereas RECA expired in June of 2024, and whereas a bipartisan effort to expend and extend RECA was led by New Mexico U.S. Senator Ben Ray Lujan and Missouri Senator Josh Hawley, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners of San Juan County adopted resolution number 23-24-61 on April 16th, 2024, expressing support for an extension of RECA, and whereas the RECA authorization was signed into law on July 4th, 2025, extending RECA through December 31st, 2028, and expanding it to add coverage for new downwind areas, including New Mexico, and for uranium miners, millers, and transporters who worked in the industry through 1990, and whereas compensation amounts were increased with eligible claimants receiving up to $100,000, and new claims can be filed until December 31st of 2027, and whereas San Juan County celebrates passage of the RECA extension, which will benefit individuals and families in San Juan County who have suffered from radiation exposure caused by employment in the uranium industry and atmospheric nuclear tests, now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of San Juan County, New Mexico, hereby expresses its continued support for uranium workers, downwinders, and other individuals and families exposed to radiation through the development of testing of nuclear weapons, and, be it further resolved, that the Board of County Commissioners celebrates the extension and expansion of RECA, and expresses gratitude for the bipartisan effort that was required to secure its reauthorization, passed, approved, and adopted the second day of September, 2025.
Thank you.
I'd like to add that Ann Cummins, when the Vanadium Corporation was in Shiprock, later on, after she graduated from Shiprock High, she wrote the book Yellow Cake, and that book talks a lot about the exposure, it's, it's, it's more like a novel, but not on the facts, like historical, but I just wanted to add that Ann Cummins, and I think her dad did pass away from radiation exposure, so it affected a lot of people in the area, so, I can make the motion?
Please.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to approve this proclamation celebrating the extension and expansion of the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act, RECA.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Good job.
All right, we'll move on to number three, and this will be introduction of San Juan County Ready Hub, John Gilbert, Deputy Chief, San Juan County Fire, and Devon Neely, public relations, good afternoon.
Afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioner, I'd like to introduce you to the brand-new San Juan County Ready Hub, this is an Esri product that we've leveraged to prepare our citizens for pre-emergency, so here in San Juan County, we of course like to be proactive as opposed to reactive, so we've developed, along with the help of Mr. Devon Neely and former GIS manager Daniel Yowey, we started, began this process with Mr. Mestes, we began this process a few months ago anyway, to develop the Ready Hub, so this is the homepage, and it's sjcounty.net/reddy is the website, it's available at our SJ County homepage as well, the homepage of the Ready site has some evacuation notices, an interactive map that we'll be able to display some current events, should there be some, this will be for major stuff that likely extends past the first operational period, or is major enough that we want to get enough public information out, as you see, there's a few map dots on there, so it's pulling from a number of data sources, so there's a wildfire map on there, some of the blue dots display some of our stream gauges that are around the county, and then we are able to log in and display some other map features, including events, evacuation areas, road closures, several other things. Within the homepage, again, as we scroll past the map, we have quick references, so of course, all the things we want to display at ease with a click of a button, so emergency alerting, so the reverse 911 systems, any fire information, of course, the burn permits that we handle quite significantly, and goes through some of the weather and fire danger, and then drought monitor on the homepage, so everything that you may need at the click of a button, just to stay prepared daily, as we go through, you'll see on the top screen, we have a few tabs, we have evacuation ready, we'll display the map again, then this also has resources on the Ready, Set, Go program, how to prepare for an evacuation, so the five Ps in your planning, and then, then our Ready, Set, Go program, and it describes the formula of how you should be ready, get set, and go, so certainly we want to provide the how, and then the need to, if it is effective, we have currently river-ready, and as we look through the charts, it's kind of dismal, but we have, of course, the forecast for the stream gauges that we can focus on, and then we display all the stream gauges within the county on a chart form, so this will help prepare us and the community of any kind of flood events, should there, should there be any forecasted anyway, here we can do any kind of, you know, at high water, we can display information about water safety, et cetera, so this is just our, our river-ready hubs spot, and then we get over into fire-ready, now currently, we want to display the, of course, wildland fire threat, so we have a bunch of information in here of how to keep your home defensible, home hardening techniques, structural ignitability, all that stuff, how to prepare yourself and your home, your property for wildfire, we also provide some links, fire danger for this area, and some of our partners are where to go for additional information, and then, of course, our social media tab will be up here, will have the four main social media campaigns that we like to display, so this will be the most recent posts by those organizations, so again, just one-stop shop to be able to check out what's going on, emergency alerts, since Facebook is very useful in that way, on the right site, of course, so seasonally, we'd like to change this, you know, as we get into the fall time or into the winter, the fire-ready will probably change a little bit, there'll still be some information about defensible space, but we'll always capitalize on the kind of current event, we've reached out to some of the LEPC partners, the Local Emergency Planning Committee, and they've, they've given us some good ideas of other ready links we could provide, one being utilities-ready, oil and gas-ready, certainly we have weather-ready, depending on the time of year, so this site is up and operational now, we'll be, we'll be conducting a media blitz here soon to display this outwardly, but that little yellow flash and light and the green triangle there is going to be our logo for it, and so we'll be displaying that, pushing that pretty hard to the community, and hopefully being able to provide accurate information in a collaborative centralized location, so we've reached out to some of our other partners and some of the other agencies, and offered our support with this site, certainly, we're curious to see how that, that partnership works, of course, we're able to host some of the data, we're able to take care of our own agency, certainly, but when we deal with outside agencies, depends on what the information we get, what we'll be able to display, so we'll see how we can partner with those folks, this was built on a template, basically, that Esri does provide in a, in a way, and we just tweaked it to see how we fit in there, and so we'll like, we'll try to keep it as relevant as possible and not too cluttered with too much stuff, we want it to be just enough to keep people interested in coming back to it, there's also on the backend of this, there's an emergency manager dashboard that we're able to utilize the map, so we can add those features, add the events, it'll also give us a lot of demographics, so we're leveraging the Esri products pretty robustly to be better managers of emergency incidents, and with that, I'll stand for any questions or comments.
Well, thank you for that, so this will be part of the county website, and then it's also going to be on Facebook as well?
Yeah, yes.
That we'll be able to, people will know how to access this, what it means?
Yes, Madam Chair, it will, we'll do a media blitz on there to, here's how to find it, we're contemplating how we want to market it, whether with our little logo, with a QR code that we can start putting on some, some vehicles, or, you know, it'll go on whatever media publications we do provide, any public messaging, if it is posted on this, we'll certainly market our little yellow warning sign, so, yes.
There was something, maybe Mr. Neely can tell me this, that sends out alerts for certain types of things, does that connect into this, or?
Madam Chair, the Everbridge system is what's used by San Juan County Communications Authority to send emergency alerts out, you need to be signed up for those alerts, and it is linked on the page here, but it's not integrated together, those two systems don't work together.
And remind people how they can sign up for Everbridge?
Yeah, I can show you.
Okay, and I have another question for you, but that just made me...
On our homepage, scroll down to the, to the quick resources, first one is sign up for emergency alerts, you'll click on the link there, and it'll ask some information, and ta-da.
Okay, that, because I've been getting alerts, I was trying to remember, so people can know, and I noticed at the top right that it says sign in, you can sign in.
That is, that is for the managers of either the website or the emergency management dashboard.
Okay, and municipalities, I suppose the word gets out to all the municipalities too, what this all means?
Yes, yeah, we've been working with some of the other PIOs specifically, and some of the other jurisdictions to, to offer up, it's very new, we haven't made a, made a large push yet, so we'll see how we can integrate by hosting a, at least a map for them, should they, they enact any kind of evacuation ceremony.
And the schools too?
Sure, it's a great idea.
Be part of the thing.
That'd be a great school ready, would probably be a good tag.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, teachers in the classroom and all that, so Commissioner Gonzalez, did you have a question?
No, not good.
Okay, all right, does anybody else have a question? Go ahead.
Was this made possible by funding that you applied for?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, it was not, we, we currently operate within an Esri suite and enterprise of a lot of their products, the hub, this is known as a hub, was a product that was already available to us, we learned of it, Esri actually came down and did, they were here for several days, but did, did some meetings through several departments, we were lucky enough to have kind of an emergency management meeting, and were able to, they kind of demonstrated this in a different way, and we were able to capitalize on that.
Okay, thank you. And one more thing that you mentioned, that's, that's been a lot of conversation with the state fire marshal, is that home hardening, and I think that's really important for people to understand what that's about, and make sure that, in, with the spread of fires, that how they can protect their house, so that was new to me, just with them last year.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that's a great point, it, I actually serve on the Fire Preparedness Task Force with the states, there's a, makes up, made up of a lot of entities throughout the state, and that's, that's on the top of the list right now, is how to, one, how to grade individual properties, or how to get all the information out, so that's, of course, that's on everybody's list in the western United States right now, it's home hardening.
Yes, all right, any other comments or questions? Okay, well, thank you so much for that information, all right, so now we'll go ahead and we'll move on to Ms. Wood, and this will be the consideration of medical plan premium, good afternoon.
Hello, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Melissa Wood, Deputy HR Officer, San Juan County, here today to just kind of go over some information and hopefully get a decision or a guide on where we should go from here, so during our budget meeting in May, we had found out kind of rather suddenly that the healthcare authority in the state of New Mexico was increasing premiums by 20% to the medical plan, with a 10% decrease to the dental and vision plans, and through the budget workshop, and with your guys' guidance, we were able to allow San Juan County general funds to pick up that increase instead of raising the premiums in a mid-year to the county plan members, so that was a great thing for us to allow, as right now, our plan runs on a calendar year, so it's January 1 through December 31, and with the budget cycle being a fiscal year, that's why they look at the premiums during the budget and try to implement them on July 1st, which causes a lot of headache for all of us trying to figure out how much we're going to be paying, what the budgets are, trying to allocate with other family members, so we just found out last week that the healthcare authority, along with the state, have decided that all of the backlash from increasing premiums in the middle of the fiscal year on plan members was more than they could handle, and they are now going to align the calendar year, the, or the, sorry, the plan year with the fiscal year, so it will be running July 1st through June 30th, so that'll be deductible, open enrollment, plan design, everything will run on the fiscal year that we already budget within, now, that causes a little bit of issue with transitioning from a calendar year to a fiscal year plan design, so we will be doing two open enrollments this year, the first one will be October, November, we're planning on it running about October 20th to November 20th, where we will be able to allow everybody to make their new plan year elections, and that's what we're really asking you, and that we're presenting in front of you today, is to know how we should design those premium elections for this first open enrollment that will be occurring and effective for the plan year of January 1, since our plan year ends December 31st of 2025. Now... Now, what we're asking is, we've presented a couple of options, so you do have in front of you a couple of things. You have the letter that was provided through healthcare authority that talks about Senate Bill 376, which sets the plan rates for FY '26, as well as talks about why they're looking at the split and the mid-year change. And then we put together a plan comparison for you, so it's a premium kind of guide. At the top, you have San Juan County. Currently, employees are paying about 17% of the premium, and the employer is paying 83%. We can continue with that, if that's your guidance. Know that it's going to, our recommendation is when we do actually do the next open enrollment in July, or April, May, for a July 1 effective date, we are wanting to completely do a full split of the premium to, back to an 80/20 design. And if we leave it at 17%, it's going to be a higher jump in six months than if you are open to us going to an 18/82% split, which would allow for a 10% shift from the employer's side back to the employee's side, but it winds up being a 1% change in that split of premium, right? Because we're already doing 17%. The premium, if you look on the PPO, most elect to enroll in the PPO, so right now, single coverage is $75.61 on a 24-pay cycle. If we do that 10% shift, it would go to $83.20. If there is no change in the premium for next fiscal year, it would stay at the $90.86, 80, sorry, 80 cents for a straight 20/80 split. But we're not 100% sure that that's going to be the plan for the state, that they make no premium change. We actually would not, we're hoping for a little bit of a change, not a 20% change, but if we make no changes, or the state makes no changes, it means that we have higher jumps in premiums, like we've been seeing since we joined the state plan. So that's what we're presenting to you today, one, to notify you that there is going to be two open enrollments, so be prepared for that, and ask for your guidance on where you would like us to go with the premium split for this open enrollment that we're about to enter. Just for kind of your guidance, the bottom half of that, I looked at some that are still self-insured throughout the county, like Bernalillo County, Dona Anna County, City of Farmington, just for comparison. So they're still in the self-insured realm, meaning they're covering their own premiums. And even on the state plan, at, if we go to a full 20/80 split, we would still be in line with either what current entities are already doing as a local public body underneath the state plan, or we would be in line with self-insured, and most of the time even under what those self-insured plans are already paying. So either way, we're still in a good spot. Our preference and our guidance is to ask for the 18%, the 10% shift, but I'm here to ask, answer any questions, or provide any guidance additionally that you guys would like to have answered. I do have two adjustments first. On our summary, there's two edits that I need to make. The second paragraph, it says January 1, 2026 through July 30, that should be June 30 of 2026. And then at the very, very bottom, the last sentence, it says recommend returning. It should be 20% employee, 80% employer, so those just got flipped. So those are a couple edits for you as you're making your recommendations or have questions.
All right. Thank you for that information. And Commissioners, do you have any questions about this or comments?
I don't know where to start.
I don't.
I'm just kidding. No, that 18% is in the median right there, is the one which you're recommending for us to accept.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gonzalez, that is correct, certainly. That means that San Juan County from the General Fund is estimated to pick up $77,000 instead of the $144,000.
And Madam Chair, Commissioner Gonzalez, that's only for a six-month period, so since you all were so gracious in thinking about our employees when it came to this mid-year plan increase during our budget workshop, there's been no increase to premiums, and that's going to be the case until the end of December. So now, we've got this six-month period from January to June that we need to figure out how to move forward with. You know, other entities did not do what you all did, so I think our employees very much appreciate the fact that you were able to help assist for that six-month period. And then, you know, this would be a nice transition from January until July of next year, where that additional 10% pickup would help kind of ease the transition into 80/20 split come July 1 of next year. So that was the thought behind this. We just learned this news last week about the change from a calendar year plan to a fiscal year plan. Makes complete sense, because it has caused a lot of unnecessary chaos throughout the state with a lot of other entities who are on the state plan, similar to us. So that was the thought behind the proposal, and why we're bringing that to you today, because we actually will be starting open enrollment here within the next month.
Yes, sir.
So...
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, with that, drive a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that the county accept the 18/82 split for the state medical plan premiums for the period until January, or until December of '25?
Till June of...
Oh, till June, all the way till June of '26.
Yes.
June 30 of 2026. Okay. I need to restate that.
Are we okay with that? Okay. He's okay. Okay. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, now, we have a presentation from Mr. Sawyer on the inspection of the detention center. Mr. Sawyer?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. As you know, there's a New Mexico State Statute 33-3-4 that requires the governing body to make an annual visit to the jail here in San Juan County. It's a statewide statute, but each governing body has to go to their detention centers. I always start kind of nagging the Commission early, but this year, you've taken, stolen my thunder, because I think that we already have four of the five, and I understand we may have a fifth visit coming up soon. So what I'd like to do would be present my resolution, adopting the findings at the next Commission meeting, and then we will be in compliance with statute.
Okay.
So this was just information today.
You have any questions for Mr. Sawyer? Well, good job, everybody. All right. Thank you, Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you.
So now, we'll move on to County Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Got a number of items to update you on, myself as well as staff, so figured this might be a good meeting to get you updated, since it was a lighter agenda. But I'll start off first, some of these items, you know, have certainly been sent to you, but I just want to make sure there's general awareness. SB 3, which created the Behavioral Health Trust account at the state level, that's something we've discussed previously, and how that could be very useful here in San Juan County, to see those dollars delivered here to assist with behavioral health efforts. That process is started at a statewide level. The Administrative Office of the Courts is responsible for managing that. They've decided to manage this via the judicial districts in the state, there are 13 of those. Our judicial district is the 11th, and it encompasses both San Juan and McKinley County. So the way this process will work is we'll have to work collectively with McKinley County, and we've already, I've already had conversations with the County Manager on what that would look like, as well as Ms. Jody Schwebel, who's the Court Executive Office for both counties over in the 11th Judicial District. So that started, there's a grant that's been made available to all the judicial districts for up to $45,000 to assist with the planning effort. So what the Administrative Office of the Courts is expecting is that there'll be a joint meeting where everybody comes together within that judicial district and outlines priorities, and ultimately, a plan put together that would identify the top five behavioral and health initiatives for each judicial district. So I just want to make sure you all are aware that we're fully engaged in that matter. We're actually looking to have the Northwest New Mexico COG serve as the fiscal agent on that. Ms. Schwebel was offered to serve as the regional representative over that effort, and McKinley County's agreeable to that. So our goal here is to try to get out ahead of everybody, and get our plan in first, and maybe gather up as many of those dollars as we can upfront, because we know the need is great, and we have a lot of good plans in the works here relative to facilities like the Crisis Triot Center, which could certainly use some operational funding, and this would be a great way by which to provide the facility like that some funding. So any questions on that? So, okay. You know, next up, we have this Thursday, the, we have a legislative committee that will be here in San Juan County at the School of Energy at San Juan College. That's the Economic and Rural Development Policy Committee. And so they've asked for a brief presentation from the municipalities and the county economic development update. And so I know a couple of you have asked about who's on the committee, so we made sure you've got a list of those folks in front of you. That's going to start at 9:00 AM on Thursday. It's a full day, it's just a one-day committee meeting, but wanted to make sure you had full awareness on that. We've been coordinating, and I want to thank Ms. Michelle Truby-Tillen on drought meetings in coordination with emergency management. We've been hosting those meetings, starting back in the spring. This is a carryover from when we suffered through some drought conditions a few years back, that we gather up the county, the municipalities, Water Commission representatives, any interested parties, State Office, the State Engineer, to make sure we've got a good understanding of what the situation looks like, what all of the various entities that provide water to various customers here in San Juan County have, is reservoir capacities and backup plans. And so that meeting was held last week. We kicked that meeting back up again, given the conditions on the Anamis. Things have improved slightly due to some recent rainfall, but we're not out of the woods yet. Aztec still is maintaining their stage-two restrictions. The other entities have not moved into restriction status yet. And the Office of State Engineer had put in place, and it's voluntary, I think it's important to note, a ditch rotation on the Anamis, where there, you know, you were able to water it for nine days on, and then you had three days off. That voluntary restriction has been lifted as of last week by the Office of the State Engineer, but we're closely monitoring that, because it'd be a very tense situation. Of course, we're getting near the end of the irrigation season, so that should help when it comes to some of the draws on the river, but keeping a close eye on that. And we've, historically, we've hosted those meetings, we've actually asked the Water Commission, Mr. Chavez, to host those meetings going forward, but just to make sure you're on, you know, we're on top of that matter as well, and the Ready Hub was actually used at that meeting to help provide stream gauge data, so it has a lot of beneficial uses, not just for general citizen information, but also for planning meetings like that. The Outdoor Recreation Conference is being held in Gallup, McKinley County, next week, and we're going to have some folks in attendance, you know, big effort, I think, here regionally, but certainly at San Juan County, to make sure we're doing everything we can to expand those opportunities related to outdoor rec. And so we'll be down there, myself, Commissioner Gonzalez, Mr. Sevager, Mr. Farrell, making sure we're in close connection with those activities and what we can do to bring more outdoor recreation to our area. And last but not least, I'd like to recognize and congratulate one of your fellow Commissioners. And I hope I'm not stealing anybody's thunder, because I haven't talked to any of you about this, but Commissioner Totacini was named the Regional Champion by the Council of Governments last week. I know Commissioner Gonzalez and Mr. Sevager were in attendance, and I just want to, I just want to quickly read this. Commissioner Totacini joins a long list of champions who have demonstrated desire to make the region better, she demonstrated regional leadership, collaboration, and service the Northwest New Mexico by fostering partnerships with COG and local communities. She also demonstrates a commitment to improving the quality of life, economy, environment, and overall development of the region. Congratulations, Commissioner Totacini.
Good job. Thank you, Mr. Stark.
And that concludes my report, but I know we've got a few others that plan to...
Thank you so much. All right, so now, we'll move on to elected officials and department heads. Do we have anything from elected officials? All right, okay. Any department heads? Come on up. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Commissioners, Bullen Belt Juvenile Services here. I wanted to make you aware of a meeting that took place last week. A gentleman by the name of Clayton Lobah, he's a Senior Program Evaluator for the Mexico Legislative Finance Committee, contacted the County Manager's Office, and then Mr. Stark got in touch with me, and this gentleman wanted to come and basically learn about detention operations, juvenile detention operations, and challenges that we deal with, get an idea of what it takes to operate a facility, and then, you know, just overall what the challenges are. And it's a good opportunity to highlight the facility and our program, and talk about our community partnerships, and talk about this board's historical commitment to funding the department, and ensuring that we have a facility to meet and take care of our own and assist, provide a resource to local law enforcement, you know, extremely valuable resource for local law enforcement, so we have a place to house juvenile detainees. And I actually met with him again today. We had a kind of follow-up meeting to kind of close out discussion. And like I said, it was just a great opportunity to share with him everything we're doing and the challenges, you know, because there's a lot of statewide challenges right now with juvenile justice, with there only being four facilities in the state. Often, there's not enough beds to house all the youth that need to be detained, and so there's a lot of discussions, as you may know, trying to figure out what we're going to do moving forward as a state to ensure that these young folks in our communities are safe, and there's a way to address this issue. So I just want to make you all aware, and then I stand for any questions if you have any...
Thank you for that. And who was Clayton Lobah? What was his purpose to be in here?
Yeah, so he is, he's a Senior Program E evaluator for the New Mexico Legislative Finance Committee.
Okay.
Yeah, and he was just, you know, I think he met with, or was going to meet with the other three facilities and other juvenile justice stakeholders to really get a picture of what's going on and what the needs are in the state, you know, tied to juvenile justice.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Webb, come on up. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So three things I wanted to bring to you today. First is, this Thursday morning, the 4th, at 9:00 AM, we're holding our graduation for the current class. I want to make sure everybody checked your inbox, and hopefully, everybody was invited. So if you didn't find that, please look, it should be there, per Lieutenant Castile. Second thing is, thanks to Devin Neely here, the ADC is going to hold... Second thing is, thanks to Devin Neely here, the ADC is going to host its first open house for the public on Wednesday. I was off earlier today, I was thinking it was the 9th. Anyhow, that's going to kick off at 6:00 PM. There will be some light snacks and drinks, all soft drinks, most likely just water and coffee. But the premise behind this is to give some education to the public about what we do and what we're about at the facility. And specifically, I'm developing a small presentation geared around your detention center, your community. So I'll have that dialed in by next week. That will be followed up with a light Q and A. I say light, it kind of depends on who shows up, I guess. And a point conclusion of that, we are going to offer to the first 15 people the opportunity to tour the facility. And to tour the facility, you have to comply with the dress code, and I apologize to some of you where we failed to get some of that information out prior to your arrival for your annual inspection and tour, so anyhow, it was more than one.
It's all good.
Yeah, it's all me, though. Anyhow, the other part of that is that those individuals, those 15, also have to pass a locals warrants check, so we're not going to take somebody back there that has a local warrant, so anyhow.
It's not being, not scared straight or anything like that, right?
No, no, this is open to the public. I mean, if it affects somebody that way, then, you know...
I wouldn't want to be back there, yeah.
Two birds, one stone.
They'll go through all the doors, right?
Yeah, so anyhow, beyond that, the following week, on the 17th, we have our full-scale exercise, and Mr. Mestas advised me to tell all of you to check your inboxes. You have been courtly invited. This thing's going to kick off at 8:00 AM. And the full-scale exercise is, I think Mr. Mestas had spoke to you about it before, but he conducts this annually, and this year he hit me up, I think back in April, to see if we'd be interested in hosting at the ADC, which absolutely we are. It's an opportunity for us to, one, hone our skills and collaborate with our local first responders, law enforcement, fire, EMS. So with that, we are honored to have the privilege of hosting at our site. And, now, correct me, Mike, this is 8:00 to noon, and then we're going to have a meal at McGee Park?
That's correct.
Okay, I nailed it. So I'm not sure what the food's going to be just yet, but it's always good. So make sure I didn't miss anything here. I do want to thank Mike Mestas. Truly, Mike. Thank you for including us. I think about every four or five years, we're offered the opportunity to host at the ADC. So I think that's about it. Stand for any questions.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Sir.
Mr. Webb, for clarification, that graduation this Thursday morning, is it 8:00 or 9:00? It's usually been 8:00, so I didn't know if it, do you change it to 9:00 or...
I have 9:00 o'clock on my schedule.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it's supposed to be 9:00.
Okay.
Yeah, 9:00 is what...
Okay, all right, thank you.
You probably got an email directly from me, and I was wrong, so...
The last one I went to was 8:00, so I didn't know.
Well, and Madam Chair, Commissioner McDaniel, we fluctuate the time. Sometimes the class is in need of an additional hour of training or curriculum, so we do fluctuate.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, so will anybody else have a report? Coming back up, Mr. Gilbert?
I want to tell you about the San Juan County Ready Hub.
Like deja vu.
We have, as you know, we were, for the last several weeks, not about a month and a half or so, we've been in temporary fire restrictions, not allowing any open burning. We have still allowed ceremonial recreational fires, but we've not allowed any open burning. So this week, we have started, due to the recent rains, allowed open burning, at least until noon for this week. We're still monitoring conditions, and we'll still issue permits as allowable based on weather conditions. So if we do get hot, dry, windy again, we'll rescind that and probably disallow open burning again as we monitor those conditions. But a lot goes into it. We do monitor some indices, some fuels conditions, and of course, the weather and all the effects of that. So it's not so much as Fire Chief David Vega's knee being hurting as it's so dry, or, but we do monitor some scientific stuff that helps us make those calls on open burning. So currently, open burning is allowed, and for the last several days, we've been allowing that until noon. So I just wanted to make sure you were updated with that, and it sounds like people are obeying fairly well. We had one call today, it was about 1:00 that they were still burning, but so far, so good, and I think everybody has been very appreciative of being able to get some of their stuff done now, so.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions with that? I'll stand for those.
And that's also on the Ready Hub as well?
We do have burn permit information on the Ready Hub of how to obtain a burn permit. And simply during the week, calling our office. On the weekends, it's through the dispatch center.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay. Good afternoon, Porter.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Porter Smith, project manager, San Juan County. So I wanted to give you all a brief update of the demolition occurring at the PNM San Juan Generating Station. That demolition is, I would call it, on the, oh, we're on the downhill side of it. They're almost finished up, and the majority of the large structures on that site have been brought down to ground level. There's some pictures, there's a picture there on your screen that kind of shows the current state of things. It's probably a little further along now, as you can see, that's from the end of July. But there's not a whole lot left standing for right now. I think the main, the main work there at the site is just sorting through all of that rubble you see on the ground and sorting out what can be recycled and what can't, and what goes to the landfill. I know that all of their water retention and storage ponds, aside from one, have been filled in and closed, covered up, and there'll be one left open. I believe, the way I understand it, is they have some groundwater monitoring to be done for the next 10 years from now, just to make sure that there's nothing coming off of that site that they don't, or anything bad coming off of that site, and that'll be, when they get done with that, they'll close the rest of it all up. But for the most part, the final site grading there will occur, they're saying right now their, their schedule is the first quarter of 2026. Everything will be brought down to basically ground level, to the, to the tops of the underlying foundations that you can't see under the ground there. So getting really close on that one. Stand for any questions, anybody has.
Would that be fenced off as well, or would it just be...
I don't know that there's any fencing planned for that. There's going to be some structure still standing, like the switchyard there. That's where all the solar companies that are coming in are plugging into the grid in that area, so there still would be some protection from that to keep people out of that kind of thing. And I'm not sure what they have planned for that site. It's a private site, so I would assume, you know, they'd probably fence it off and keep people out of there. I've heard rumors that they're trying to sell it to, you know, to other developers for whatever purpose, so not real sure what they'll do there, but I imagine it'll stay fenced off there. The intent is that when they get done, there's nothing dangerous left on the site, nothing to cave in, nothing to fall into, nothing for anybody to get hurt on, so.
That's good to know, thank you.
Any landscaping plans or anything? I don't imagine there'll be any landscaping plans with fenced in there.
Commissioner Gonzalez, I know that they're doing some seeding, especially in the pond areas that they've closed and backfilled, and I'm sure they probably will seed the rest of the area and try to get some of the natural vegetation to kind of come back, probably real similar to what you'd see on a pipeline right away or something of that nature.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your report. And then I just wanted to recognize Representative Hernandez for coming in. Nice to have you here. And then, do we have any other department heads? Come on up. Hello.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Give you a two-week bridge report. So on our project on 3500, progress has proceeded as planned from, before I last shared with you. The roof of the structure was poured, it was a week ago yesterday, a week ago today. Did have a fairly significant runoff event within that watershed. It was a week ago this past Sunday. That did result in the need for some, some site cleanup and some rework of some wing wall forming. So to your prayer for rain, Commissioner Lanier, I would like it to happen gently or somewhere else.
For the time being.
Same to be said for the bridge on Road 3000. Very critical stage of construction. Contractor does have the groundwater issues finally stabilized. The schedule for the concrete pour for those two great beam footers is this Thursday and this Friday, doing them each individual, individually, to limit our exposure to any potential weather, because they are indeed working within an active drainage channel. So again, rain gently or somewhere else would be great. And I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions you might have for this report.
Great. Any comments or questions?
Madam Chair, if I could, one of the things I've discussed with Commissioner Gonzalez and Commissioner Lanier is the need to have a public information meeting, and so, you know, obviously, Mr. Perel is updating the commission every meeting on the status, and but there's still questions remaining about the schedule and timeline, and what happened to project difficulties, what's put us to this point. And so we are scheduling, and unfortunately, it's happened to pair up against some other meetings, but September 10th, in the commission chambers at 5:30, we're going to offer such an opportunity for the community to come, and we can share with them the background on the projects and the status and some of the difficulties that have been encountered to date, just make sure that there's full awareness and transparency. You know, we obviously use a lot of different forms to communicate with Facebook, with our website. Mr. Perel's been providing those every two-week, three-week look-aheads, and but if there's a need for some more detailed information, we're happy to provide a Q and A session, so I just...
Is contractor going to be here at that meeting?
Mr. Madam Chair and Commissioner Gonzalez, we will certainly invite them to attend the meeting. We haven't provided them notice yet. In fact, this is the notice we're providing to the public at large and the commission about such a meeting, so, but we will definitely make that invitation made available to them.
And that's Wednesday, September 10th at 5:30?
It is. It would be right here in the commission chambers, so.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, thank you for your report. All right, do we have any other reports from department heads? Come on up, Mr. Suvager.
Good afternoon, or good evening.
Madam Chair, County Commission, just a bit of good news. You may recall, a resolution to support a grant application for affordable housing was submitted back, back in early March. We got word late last week that that grant application was approved, and so that should pay for the whole affordable housing study, and hopefully put another tool in our toolbox as we try to address and combat that issue in our area.
Thank you. How long do you think that'll take? I mean, do you have any idea?
It should take less than a year. We actually have 18 months to complete this grant application, but a year timeline has been identified, so it shouldn't take too long. It's, you know, as far as the public meeting goes compared to a comprehensive plan or even an outdoor recreation plan, it's not as extensive. It's more data gathering, so we imagine it should take less than a year.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, thank you very much. All right, do we have any other department heads? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody coming up, so now it's time for general public input. Comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes, and to subjects the commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the public, general public. So if you have a comment, please come forward, identify yourself, and talk to the commission. All right, I don't see anybody running up here, so you can always catch us afterwards, and so with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn.